So at this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start off with roll call. Carrie?
Eric Sheen.
No. Okay. I'm just going to lay Joe.
Joe Coletti, Hebrew.
Great. Thanks, Gabe.
Gabe Marks, Hebrew.
Thank you. Eric?
Eric Shevchenko, Handover.
Thank you. Mary?
Mary Pachuski, Marlboro.
Great. Pam?
Shella.
No. Mike?
Mike Sharon, Hebrew.
Thank you. Kristen?
Kristen Anderson, North.
Great. Thank you. Sue?
Sheila.
No. Okay. And Heather?
Heather Summer, Hebrew.
Great. Thank you. And Mike Morris, Hebrew. At this point, we'll... Item two, the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag's in the back. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay. Which brings us to item three, public comments. So if you bear with me for a moment. Hebrew Handover Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. And Gabe, if I could ask you just to be the timekeeper for us. Thank you. At this point, is there anybody present that would like to give a comment?
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I know of a couple governmental agencies...
I'm sorry. Could I just ask you to identify yourself real quick first before you...
Thank you. Terry McManus, 169 North Street, Hebrew.
Great. Thank you.
You got right in the middle of my joke.
Sorry. I blew your timing. I apologize.
I know of a couple governmental agencies that would love to use your room. I have to compliment the board on this meeting room, but also unbelievably successful hybrid model. You've achieved probably the most open meeting that I've seen yet within town and actually around the state. So congratulations. No, not congratulations. Thank you. I don't have to come down all the time. Which brings me to the reason I'm here. What you all do is not easy. I've done it in past lives. I know how hard it is and know the difficult decisions that need to be made. And I just wanted to say, we have some outgoing board members here, and I want to just say thank you. You all do a good job. It's thankless sometimes, and I appreciate it. Eric, I really liked your comments, your parting comments at the last meeting. They were insightful. They helped me out a bunch. I look forward to coming to more board meetings in the future, and I wish you all, those that are remaining, good next couple of years. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to give a public comment that's present? Okay. Seeing none, is there anyone online that would give a public comment? Just make yourself known or raise your digital hand. No? Okay. Eric's telling me no, which will move us on to item four, which is the addition or deletion of any agenda items. So I'll open it up to the board. Anybody wish to add or delete anything? Okay. That is a no, which moves us on to student representative reports. Ava, you're up.
All right. So I would like to say hello, everyone. So first of all, the blood drive is tomorrow, so students will be lining up and getting their blood drawn, and it'll be kind of fun. There'll be like, I heard there will be like Christmas-themed fuzzy socks and like a movie playing, so that's really cute. And secondly, the volleyball team has won their state championship game, which is really incredible and super exciting for our school. You know, they always do a great job every single year, so definitely a call for them. And another thing is that seniors are almost done with their college applications. Definitely a lot of anticipation about like, you know, getting their acceptancees or niles back or hearing back from colleges. All of that, and that entire process has definitely made quarter one stressful for seniors, but I think, you know, going into quarter two is becoming a bit less stressful. Another thing that I have noticed as I've been attending these, I know we haven't talked about it in a while, the diversity and equity meetings. So recently, I've noticed that there's been like a lower attendance. For example, the last meeting, I think we only had, well, including the two attendees. So currently, we've been like discussing about ways like we could possibly increase the attendance. That's sort of just been an ongoing thing, so I thought I'd just keep the board updated. And that's my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Oliver, you're up.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Biggest thing that I wish to say is, in the board of the meeting that I had, we were discussing the workload of high school students on a day-to-day basis, and I've been hearing on the school that a lot of students have been stressed who have taken two to three tests in a day, and it brought to attention the struggles of those students and how it can be difficult to manage like all these assemblies constantly from many different classes and even things outside of school. And I thought I should bring this to the attention of the board to remind us of the struggle of the students on a day-to-day basis, and just to keep that in the back of our minds. In addition, the NHS induction meeting is on the 6th of December, which is exciting for new members of the NHS. And our soccer team, the boys' soccer team, got to the semifinals and lost by a close one point, but still did a great job and it's a good accomplishment to be able to do that. That is my report.
That's great. Thank both of you. Okay. Well, that moves us on to item six, which is the chair report. So first, I just want to say, stole some of my thunder. Appreciate that. The volleyball team, awesome job on Saturday. State, class M state champs. And great job by the soccer team as well. They definitely work hard. I know the girls also made it to the quarterfinals and lost a really close one. So it was all the way around a great fall season in general. I know the boys' football team is tomorrow night, and they're playing not here and not at Bacon, but at Cheney Tech. So if you're available and you're interested in some Thanksgiving football with Ram High School, that's where the game will be, and that should close out their season, which they did a great job as well. So there are... Mr. McManus pointed out there's some board members leaving, and I just wanted to take this opportunity. I'm one of them. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the board members that are leaving. Eric, Mary, and Sue, and myself. Then they've been instrumental in everything that we've done that's positive and helpful. They... It's hard. I think we come to one meeting and think that, you know, this is kind of what we do every day, but really, there's policy meetings and meetings to maintain the buildings and figure out how we're going to fix the fields and how come we didn't get to frac the, the well didn't frac quite right, and we have to go back and redo that, and curriculum meetings, and, you know, there's all sorts of things that get, that go on kind of outside of this realm and in a much smaller group, and it's a lot of work. And it's an honor to be a group, a member of the group with all of you, and it's been something that's been a learning experience for me, and I've really appreciated the time you're here. And certainly appreciate everything that everybody on the board has done. On the same note, I think I'm comfortable in saying for the four board members that are leaving as well as the ones that are staying, that, you know, nothing, no one generally is successful on their own, and that is a direct result of the team, the administrative team, Mr. McAmare and his team, the teachers, both the folks in the classroom and the people behind the scenes, all the administrative folks that kind of make things happen outside of the classroom, and people that take care of the fields and coaches and all the things that make this place, the district, what it is. It's a lot of hard work, and the board certainly appreciates both coming and going. And then the last thing I would just say is that we have a couple of new board members here that are, I think, just trying to get their feet wet and see how it goes, and wish you the best of luck. Congratulations on your reelection. And I can't tell you that it's been such a great experience working with this group, and I'm sure you'll do a great job and just add to it, which is very... I think you'll get a lot out of them like the next four years. Yes, it is four years. That's all I'm saying.
So I just, I'm going to echo a few things. I also want to congratulate the girls' volleyball team. I was there on Saturday when they won the championship. I think it was one of the, they lost one game. It was three games to one to win the match. It was like one of the few... I know they've lost a couple of matches this season, but I think it was few and far between. It was a great game, great match, and I'm super excited. The one thing that I'll add is not only is this the third consecutive year that this particular team has won, it's the 10th, I believe, it's the 10th state championship approach during, which is a pretty remarkable feat. He just keeps doing it, and the kids keep doing it. It's remarkable. I just want to say thanks to the veterans, including Chair Morris, who came here in the days preceding Veterans Day a couple of weeks ago, a great celebration of all the high school and middle school. We appreciate you and your other veterans for coming in and talking with the students. Just, we appreciate all you've done for our country, what you did for the community by coming in and talking with the kids. Somebody that didn't get right, I do have some new stuff, so I do want to recognize and congratulate the Ram Middle School Girls Cross Country Team, who I learned finished fourth overall for Middle School State Cross Country Meet, and as well as the boys' soccer team, who lost a nail-biter of a game. It was tied at double overtime. Just for context, it was tied at double overtime, and then it went to penalty. I don't understand soccer, but this is what I'm told. And then it goes to penalty kicks if it's still tied after two overtimes, and we lost by one goal in penalty kicks. It was like either six to seven or seven to eight. So it was a heartbreaking loss, but super proud of the boys for the good season that they had. I also want to welcome the two board members who will be officially joining the board at our next board meeting. Thanks for being here, and I look forward to working with you. And to that point, I want to recognize our four board members who will have tonight as their last meeting, be their last. Board Chair Mike Morris, Board Vice Chair Sue Stolfi, Board Member Mary, and Eric Shevchenko. On behalf of the entire Ram staff, I want to express our sincere gratitude to each of you for your dedicated service to the Ram community, your tireless advocacy and support for students and staff is noted and appreciated. You know, you, what I always say is, when you have a high-functioning board, you can have a high-functioning district. And I think that this board is indicative of the good work that we're able to do here. So we appreciate the work that you're doing for the students in the district. I do just have small tokens of appreciation that I'll pass out real quick. Thank you very much. Shevchenko, that is your name.
Thank you very much. And I will just conclude by saying that I hope everybody on the board, and I hope all of our people here in attendance, students and staff and members of the community, have a wonderful Thanksgiving. It's a great opportunity for us to reflect and be thankful on the things that we have, and certainly a lot to be thankful here in this community. So I just want to say, have a Thanksgiving type of fun. And that concludes my report.
All right. Which brings us to item eight, which is the approval of the minutes. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular October 16th Board of Education.
So moved.
Thanks, Mike. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll throw a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Which brings us to item nine, which is the student program spotlight and the best part of the meeting. And that is Ram's dual credit program.
So I'll just kick it off and say that, as the board knows, Region Eight was awarded a grant for almost $40,000 from the state earlier this year to enhance and expand our dual credit offerings for Ram High School students. Our district was one of 89 Connecticut school districts identified and chosen to receive grant funding through this competitive grant. The grant was written by three staff members who are joining us here today. I'm going to talk, Lori Vega-Boulay, our dual credit coordinator, Mary Rose Need, our curriculum coordinator and instructional coach for the district, and Dr. Penny Grisbo, Ram High School principal. I noted this, I think, to the board at one point already, but I think it's worth repeating. I think that this was five or six days into the summer that you guys got together and wrote that or something, something to that effect. So it was like the beginning of June, summer kicked off. I just think it's important to note that the board had invested in the new position of the Curriculum Coordinator and Instructional Coach, and Lori's position as the Dual Credit ECE Coordinator is also a new position. And I just think that, you know, within five to seven days of two people being new in new positions, they went out and got us a $40,000 award. So it's money well invested on behalf of the district, and we appreciate the work that you did. They're going to, again, they're going to talk about the dual credit program and provide an overview of it and speak how the grant funding will be used to expand and enhance the curriculum... I'm sorry. Enhance the current program. Fortunately, we are joined by some high school students who will share how they are taking advantage of the opportunity to earn college credits through classes that are part of the Ram Educational Opportunity Sandbook. So I'll turn it over to our presenters.
So looking at our dual credit program, you'll see on the slide up here are several of the colleges that we articulate dual credit programs with. And we also up there have the AP College Board, and I want to explain a little bit about the difference between the AP pathway to getting college credit versus dual enrollment, because they're different although they serve a similar purpose. So the AP program is run by College Board, and students will take an AP course for an entire year. I forgot my last line. Will take an AP course for an entire year, and they will study content related to the test for that course, and they will build skills around that. Whether or not they are able to access college credit is dependent on how they do in May on a sitting for a single test. It's a very high-stakes test. For kids who are up for it, it's great, but for some kids, that's not the best way for them to be evaluated, and it's not always the best way for them to learn. The dual credit is a different kind of option for them to earn college credit by attending a course that's been articulated with another college like UConn English or ECSU Public Speaking that is taught by a qualified faculty member at Ramsor. Faculty members are certified by the colleges, and they're often trained by the colleges as well, and they execute the course here at Ram. At the end of the year, the grade that the student receives then goes on to a transcript from that college or university. And so instead of having to sit for a high-stakes test, the students receive the credit on a college transcript as if they were sitting in that college course. And so that's really the difference between the two. Both serve a purpose for different kinds of students, but by expanding our dual enrollment program, we're offering more opportunities for more students.
Hello. As you can see up here, we have a listing of the Ram courses that we currently run with different organizations and the cost, if there is any, that is associated with those. We mostly have UConn ECE courses, but we also have a good amount at Connecticut State College, which is formerly one as Institute of Booting College, at Blue Rivers, and also Catholic Community College. And those are free. Aerospace Engineering, which is through St. Cloud. When we run that course, it is $100 per the course, as long as they mean gain test grade and also pass a certain percentage. And then we also have some other engineering ECE courses that are affiliated with RIT, which is Rochester Institute of Technology, and the leaders of student engagement. And those are also a kind of a per-course price point. We have the YMPI, the Math and Manufacturing Industry, which is a pipeline, which goes to Blue Rivers. That's a little bit of a different coursework, which allows students to earn some credit and at the same time get kind of prepped for, yeah, certified depends. There's a few different kinds of stuff that are involved there, but that's also free. And then the last are listed there are the UConn courses, and those are for general credit. When you look at what we have currently, we also have the leading courses that are in work. When you look at the Eastern courses there, the ones that have the single asterisk, those are the ones that we are planning on offering potentially next year. So we have a whole bunch of our classes that we didn't have before. We're opening up coursework to students who, you know, while, I don't want to say the high flyers are kind of, we see in some of the other courses, it's opening to a different range of students and a little bit more inclusive. We have a whole art section that's coming in. We also have a creative writing, potentially, and English, a new English course. We have the UConn Introduction to Engineering. And then we just, actually just yesterday, that means that we've probably even had graphic design and also photography through Blue Rivers. I'm looking into potentially expanding Word Language so that we can go to earlier years of instruction and science, which is a little bit of a... This next slide is just a comparison, so you can see what students are saving. We compared UConn, URI, and then a private school. So when we look at it, all of the schools, the basic, minimum, full-time enrollment is twelve credits. So at the most, this is how expensive they tend to be spending for twelve credits. Of course, it is fifteen credits, and it's a little less. But based on a semester, and also with the subsidies that they have to pay, three credits equates to $2,500 at UConn versus $200. At URI, it's $4,400 versus $400. And then you have Q and A averaging $6,500. So there's a great savings here, and these are what we're comparing. And of course, I'm comparing it to paid credits. We're not talking about the free courses that just go up to New College and ECSU, which is a little class of stuff.
All right. So this slide shows you the, just a snapshot of the last three years of enrollment that we've had in our dual enrollment classes. We've had dual enrollment for a while, but this grant and other opportunities to collaborate with colleges in the area have expanded, which we're really excited about. And as you can see, you know, we have a steady number of students who are enrolled in these courses, and we just continue to see, you know, intend to see them to move up as well as we offer more courses. And as students realize the gold mine that they have here in terms of being able to walk out of high school with so many college credits and not have to spend that money later on, which for me, I think is priceless. If you go to the next, we have what this, what this grant actually is covering for us. So we could, as, we were told by the state how much we could apply for, and we could apply for up to $40,000. So we had to get it under 40, but I think we just, we only left pennies on the table, really. And we tried, we had to like really figure it all out in order to get there. But, you know, we have a combination of curriculum writing for existing and new coursework for the dual enrollment classes, professional development that helps our teachers to, you know, be able to teach those courses at the high school level for the colleges, and then the textbooks that go along with several of the courses that we are implementing. And also two key big items that I think are very notable here because they're definitely things that we wouldn't have been able to get otherwise. And so for engineering and manufacturing, we have the laser marking machine, and then our interactive iRobot, which I included a picture of there in the corner for you. We actually just ordered that recently, otherwise I would have had to have you come here and display it for you, but maybe at a future meeting. It'll be exciting to see what that does. It's an interactive AI robot that has a lot of potential to help our students to sort of grow in that area. So we're really excited about that. And then we have our students here with us. So unfortunately, Jolie was planning on being here, but unfortunately, she got called into work, and she's a very responsible young lady, so she regrets not being here. But she has had the anatomy and physiology course, our UConn English, business communications, marketing principles, and personal finance. So many college credits that she'll walk away with. And we're highlighting these students particularly because they really are the ones who have taken true advantage and will walk away with a lot of credits in their pocket. I know that Ava and Oliver have both taken dual enrollment courses, so they will walk away with some credits as well. But we wanted to highlight some of our kids who are sort of doing, running the gamut in the different options that we've had, so they're going to explain their experience with you. So we're going to start with Grace Shallow.
Hi, I'm Grace Shallow, and I'm a senior. And I've taken UConn English, Business Communications, Marketing Principles, Accounting, software applications, and next semester I'll be taking Personal Finance. And I think that the dual enrollment program at Ram is a very great program because I know that when I was going and talking to my colleges that I applied to, I was telling them about the programs that I've been taking and how they've been dual enrollment, and they were very, very impressed that I was doing all of that. So I just felt like that's a big contribution to that type of experience.
Hi, I'm Emily Corey. I've taken EMT, Medical Careers, Anatomy and Physiology, and next semester I'll be taking Communications. And if it wasn't for EMT, I wouldn't have had all the opportunities that I have today. Like, I'm in my town's fire department, I have my EMT certification, and I've attended the CT Fire Academy Intro and Advanced Class. And if it wasn't for these classes, I would never have thought that I would be in that field because none of my family is in that at all. And not only am I getting college credits, but I'm able to apply, because I've never been a math and science person, but because I'm taking these medical classes, I'm able to show colleges that I can apply math and science in a medical way, and that shows that I can excel in those fields, and that gives me that opportunity, and I'm very glad that I'm taking them.
Hello, I'm Landon Bell, and I'm a senior at Ram. I'm taking software applications and marketing principles next semester, but I've already taken Personal Finance and Business Communications. And kind of like Emily, I never really thought of what I wanted to do for college until the last two years where I've taken Personal Finance, Business Communications, and I've also taken management, which is a dual enrollment class, but it kind of helped me strive to put me in the direction that I want to go for like sports management when I'm in college. And I kind of want to highlight the fact that it's, for me, it was really the teachers that kind of connected to me, like Dr. Hall and Mr. Landry. They really kind of like, I connected with them instantly, like the first day I ever met them, and then they kind of drove me to where I wanted to be for college and to where I am today. And even like, say you're going into the military, so maybe you're not really thinking, oh, I don't really need these credits, but like Personal Finance and Business Communications, you're always going to need to know how to talk to people, so Communications is a really good class. And then Personal Finance helps you out with like managing your money. So ever since I took that class, I always put like 60% of my paycheck into the bank, and I don't touch it, and I just kind of leave it there because I know that I'm going to need that money for college, and the credits help me out with college as well, so I won't have to pay as much money when I'm older.
Hi, my name is James Calhura. I'm a senior at Ram. During my time at high school, I've taken five dual enrollment courses. I've also taken a number of AP courses. I've taken four such so far, and I've also taken, I'm taking four this year. So if you want to know more about that other pathway, and the reason why I'm taking them is primarily just to, just make sure that colleges know that I can sort of have rigor and responsibility to use for like college level classes, and being able to show them in high school is really important.
So thank you to our students, and thank you for listening. Now, if you have any questions or comments for us.
Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. If you're able to satisfy the requirements and you can get the college credit at a given school, does that help or imply that you will be accepted to that school when you graduate from Ram?
It doesn't guarantee an acceptance, but certainly when you have already, you've already been enrolled there and have taken classes and have been successful, I can't, you know, but think that that's giving you a leg up for sure.
And when you're on Navias and you start listing the courses, there's a section where you get to list in what order, like are they Level One? Are they honors? Are they advanced placement? Are they full college course? And then you can kind of demonstrate where they fall in that area. So in some ways, colleges do see right away that these courses aren't just... Because like UConn, they'll say, UConn ECE, so they know it's UConn, but the ECSU, they'll say, Anatomy and Physiology. And so when you can distinct the type of coursework that it is, it does, I think it does help, and it does show that you're making that progress course instead of, you know, a non-college course.
Yeah. I was just thinking that, you know, it's a stressful time for students to apply to school, and if they have a little extra assurance from taking these courses, then that's just another benefit.
No? Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, I was just going to say, I just am so proud that we have offered these courses and that we are expanding the offerings. My daughters both took advantage of the ECE programs that were offered at the time they were here. And one of my daughters did end up at UConn, and she had taken some UConn ECE credits. And not only did she get credit, she's graduating this semester early. And not only did she get credit, she's graduating this semester early, so that is, that is a huge benefit. But imagine walking into college already having perhaps a four point O. You know what I mean? You already have, you walk in there, you're like, all right, like, you know, I'm doing all right.
Takes the pressure off the first semester.
It does. It lets you, it gives you a little bit of plus. You have the option of, if you don't choose to graduate a semester early, you can perhaps take a few fewer courses and not have to be so loaded down, and you can kind of take some, some of your harder courses without having to take a full load, you know, of fifteen plus credits. But it was a huge opportunity for her, and I think, and my other daughter as well, she went to Piac, but she also got to take those credits with her. So I just can't say enough about it. I think it's wonderful, and I'm so happy to hear that we're expanding those opportunities for kids. It's a great part of Ram.
Yeah, you guys, really impressive. I'm curious, you're taking all these extra courses. Are any of you in band, chorus, do sports, have a job off, you're all shaking your head. That's, it's really a lot to take on. It's really impressive, and, and you're going to love that you're not going to have to spend so much money at the end of it.
Anyone else?
The only thing I would say is I just, I think it's remarkable that you can do all what you're doing, to Heather's point, and then also tackle these classes that were really not necessarily made for somebody who's in high school right now. So it's, it's, credit reflects on you guys that you were able to do all that you do, plus do that. And then, I guess the only thing I wanted to know is, is did any of these courses in any of your experiences shape what you decided to do next?
Yeah. I would not be, I would not be at Bradley Airport at six thirty in the morning running sprints and doing the push-ups if I had not gone and called my profs into class.
Okay.
So that definitely prepared me.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank the students, thanks to staff. As somebody who just paid actually for a semester of college for my daughter at Central Connecticut City University, like literally like two days ago, I, on behalf of your parents, thank you for doing what you're doing. I know the Calhures and mom and dad, that's, that's helpful. So thanks much for being there, guys. We appreciate, appreciate all you guys and your doing and staff.
Yeah, I'd just like to give a shout out to our staff, too. We're willing to put in the extra work to re-schedule the classes to create, and get them approved and to be supportive of our students.
Hundred percent, yeah. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
What's that? Yeah, actually, can you, can we take a picture real quick with the group? I already gave you your next one. I know it's hard for you. I know, right? Same with us all. Wow. All right. This brings us to item ten, which is old business, and starts us off with the second reading of policies.
So I'll just, I'll jump in, and then there's a series of motions that have been recommended for board members to entertain. I'll just say, the first, one, two, three, four, five policies that we are looking at for second reads, which is graduation requirements would be updating a current policy, Policy 5144, Students 504, and the Rehabilitation Act Amendment seventy-three, will be a new policy. It is current, I just remind board members, it is currently a regulation but should be a policy. The next policy, 4218, is the same policy but for staff, does not exist as either a reg or a policy, and it should, so it would be a new policy. 4219, External Heat Illness Awareness, is, is not a current policy, and it should be to be compliant with updated legislation. And then the last one is Policy 4220, Emergency Action Plan for Intermural Athletic Events. So these came as first reads prior to, for our last meeting. I had no feedback or comments or questions for changes. So what we did is we cleaned them up, and they're clean versions of the policies, and I would recommend that the board move forward with adopting the policies as presented.
Would it be easier, so who's my policy first? Eric?
It'd be Mary.
And Mary, would it be easier?
Carrie.
Carrie, yeah. So would it be easier, do you want to talk about each of these in advance and then go through the motions? Do you want to, how do you, do you have anything, any input to them?
We did review them earlier for subcommittee meeting, and we were in agreement moving forward as Colin has described.
Okay. Okay. Gabe, any input?
I, I agree with Eric.
Okay. All right, so then, why don't we do this for those first five, then? Why don't we, we'll bring them, we'll bring the motions up, obviously open an opportunity to discuss them, and then go through a vote on them. But if there's nothing that's controversial or any, you know, significant input that we need to go for those five, unless it arises part of discussion, we'll, we'll go through those relatively quickly. So for ten point one A, graduation requirements, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the revised policy six one four six, graduation requirements as presented. I'm sorry, thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Heather. Is there a discussion? Did anybody on the line join us from the border? No? Okay. All right, hearing none, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor. Any opposed? Hearing none, that one carries unanimously. All right, so that brings us to ten point one B, which is five one four four. And I would entertain a motion to adopt Policy five one four four, Students, and Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, and Title Two of the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety as presented. Is there someone willing to make that motion? Don't move. Thank you, Gabe. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Heather. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor. Any opposed? Hearing none, that is a, carries unanimously. Which brings us to ten point one C, forty-two one eight. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt Policy four two one eight, which is the Employee in Section five oh four of the Real, did I just do this wrong? No, Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, and Title Two of the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety as presented. Thank you, Eric. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well, and which brings us to ten point one D, which is Policy four two one nine. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt Policy four two one nine, External Heat Illness Awareness for Intermural and Intermural Athletic Events as presented. Thank you, Heather. Is there a second? Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor. Any opposed? All right, hearing none, that carries unanimously. And that finally brings us to item ten point one E, which is four two two zero, and I would entertain a motion to adopt Policy four two two zero, Emergency Action Plan for Intermural Athletic Events as presented. Okay, thanks, Joe. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well. And it finally brings us to the subsequent ones. Do you even want to talk through?
Yeah, I can just tee them up if you'd like. So, so these are, as the board knows, not only are we looking to update and make sure that our policy book is most current with, with updated legislation, we are also looking at it from the lens of what are some policies that currently exist in our policy handbook that don't need to exist in our policy handbook? Either they could be in a, in a parent handbook or a student handbook as opposed to a policy. And so this is the, these are the first of a few that fall under that umbrella. And if you want to go through them one at a time, I can certainly speak to each one, but basically, the, I'll just say in general, the recommendation came from our attorneys at Shippman and Goodwin, who reviewed our policy handbook and recommended repealing each of these policies because either they are A, covered under a variety of other things like FOI and mandatory requirements, or other policies that currently exist there.
So can you just maybe just hit the highlights of the board, which, but each one just?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so for the, first of all, the Board of Education meetings, this policy is not required. It only states that Board of Ed meetings shall be held at Ram High School, and the Board shall establish and file a regular meeting schedule. First and foremost, we're not meeting at Ram High School anymore.
Clear violation. It moves us to delete that policy.
Minor detail, but then the other reason is the obligation to file a meeting schedule is actually in state law, so it's not required via school board policy. And it was recommended, and it is already included in Bylaw nine three four two, and the recommendation from our Shippman told me this term.
Okay.
Keep going.
Yeah, might as well go through them.
Sure. So for Policy one one three zero, School District Records, this policy is also not required as it, as it addresses what is in the FOI FOIA law. Also, the second paragraph is problematic because it references documents excluded by this policy as being potentially different from what's excluded by FOI law. So we could have conflict there. And so the policy also requires that the school principal shall notify a requestor of a denial and the reason for it, and school principals are generally not involved in responding to FOI requests. That's typically something that comes through central office. The next one is notifications. We're recommending repeal as, as meeting notification is already discussed in Bylaw nine three four zero A, Construction and Posting of Agenda. And the last one is health. For students, this policy is outdated and does not comply with current law around immunizations. Furthermore, the Board may remember that we actually just adopted policies related to health immunizations and health assessments. And so the important pertinent information that this, that was in here is covered under those two policies. So again, it's unnecessary and recommended.
Okay. All right, so we'll go back through. If there's any questions, you can certainly tee them up with Colin as we go, and then if not, then we'll just move on. So for item ten point one F, Board of Education Meetings, I'll entertain a motion to delete Policy one one and two two, Board of Education Meetings. Thank you, Joe. Is there a second? Eric beat you. Thank you, Eric. Is there any discussion?
I'll just say that we went over these, this group as well.
Okay.
Subcommittee meeting, and discussed it in some detail in our agreement.
Okay, I'll shoot them at first. Gabe, anything to add to that? No? All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Brings us to ten point one G, which is the School District Records. And at this point, I would entertain a motion to delete Policy one one three zero, which is the school district's records. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mary. Is there a second? Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that's unanimous. Brings us to ten point one H, which is Policy one one two four, and I would entertain a motion to delete Policy one one two four, notifications. Okay, there, Heather, thanks. David a second, or Eric a second? Okay, thanks. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that's unanimous. Brings us to ten point one I, which is five one four one, Health, Students. At this point, I would entertain a motion to delete Policy five one four one, Health, Students. Thank you, Eric. Is there a second? Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor? And any opposed? And there is none. So that is unanimous. Which brings us to item eleven and new business.
So the administrative team has put together a presentation. We wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to share our assessment data from twenty-three, I'm sorry, from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, from standardized assessments that have been administered, administered to students. And at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Michael Cerusi, Dr. Ken Brizgo, and Mary Rose Mead to the podium to share the results with the board and how those results are being used to identify goals geared towards increased student achievement.
All right, hello again. And I thought this was live, so if I look like I'm talking to a mic that's not working, that's what I was doing. Appreciate you having us here this weekend. Does it actually work? Oh, it picks up for people outside. All right, thank you for those who are listening inside. Okay, so good to know. So we are here tonight to present to you the data for last school year, but we are going to start by sharing our calendar for this year's testing. So at the high school, we do have our PSATs. We took the grade eleven in October. We will have grades nine and ten as well in the spring. SAT grade eleven is in March as well, and that is our state exam as well as the SAT for grade eleven. And then our NGSS, which is the New Generation Scientific, or Scientific Skills. NGSS, yeah. Next Generation Science. There you go. I knew it was, I knew it was close. Okay, I'll do that. That's also grade eleven, so you'll see our grade eleven students, unfortunately, are tested, tested in a standardized test in three times in their grade. Yeah, exactly. Ava knows what that feels like. Oliver will know what it feels like. This. And as well, we can't leave out our Advanced, Advanced Placement exams, which are also in May, the first two weeks. And depending on how many Advanced Placement classes students are taking, that is ten through twelve, but I would say the majority are eleven. And then next would be twelfth graders and then a smattering of tenth graders. Middle school will do seventh and eighth grade smarter balance in the spring, and also the NGSS in the spring as well for eighth graders. And grade eight does the PSAT, which they did in October. So as you can see, our eighth graders are tested three times as well. So our eighth graders and eleventh graders do a lot of testing. But it does give us a lot of great data. So we're going to start with the high school. So our PSAT nine last year, well, comparative to the year before as well, so we're showing you previous year and then last year, just so you can see the difference. Our mean score is above the state as well as our individual tests. And then also for, from year to, one year to the next, you can see that they, they've gone up in most places, not all places, but especially in math, from sixty-two percent to eighty-two percent. I know we've had a lot of math, you know, interventions and things that we've looked at and some adjustments we've made, so fortunately, we're seeing a difference of that later. We also have the PSAT ten, which we see in two thousand twenty-one, two, and then last year. And we have scores trending down from fifty-three percent to forty-six percent, both being benchmarks, but you know, still not really statistically significant. But we do see that in the English, we have both from ninety percent to seventy-seven percent, and for math, fifty-four, forty-nine. But you know, the good thing about the PSAT nine and ten is those aren't tests that were held to at the state level. These are in preparation of the grade eleven assessments, and they just give us information to help us understand, you know, what that cohort of students may be needing, and so that we do have time to intervene and provide support so that when it gets to grade eleven, that they hopefully will see an increase in their scores. And of course, we've only been doing this probably for about the last six, seven years? That we've been doing it from eight to eleven. So it's relatively newer for us to be able to see that a cohort go from one year to the next, but we will also remember finally. the next, but we will also remember finally COVID that interrupted really the progression of that, and for us to really be able to see, you know, exactly how our students were really doing if they didn't, if they weren't, you know, in the middle of COVID and all that. So the data is interesting, but again, it doesn't tell the whole story. So if you go to the next slide, we have grade 11 SATs from last year. And for English writing, we had 540, which is above the state average of 493. Math 532, which is again above the state average of 482, and the total of 1,072 to 975. Now, we're always above the state average, which obviously is a good thing, but we do know that our data is showing that our students are trending down a little bit, which is consistent with most high schools across the state or across the nation, we really should say, since COVID. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see the 2021 being at the bottom. You can see that the scores drop a little bit, so from 560 to 549 to 540, and then 568, 549 to 532. As you can see, the state numbers also declined, and if we were to show you other schools around the state, that you would see a similar pattern. And then we go to our AP tests. This gives you the variety of tests that our students are able to take if they take the coursework. So anywhere from art classes to world language classes, history classes, science classes, English classes, so it runs across a lot of the curriculum areas. And so, when our students take those tests, they are specifically prepared for them by that coursework and our teachers. And you'll see on the next slide that our AP data for last year was that we had 345 students taking an AP exam. We have those who get a score of a three, four, or five, which is passing, and they get college credit, is 320, so a significant percentage, which is 92.75% of our students who do then receive or earn a passing score and then are eligible to have those credits count at the college level, depending on where they're going and what college and what they're doing. So the college does decide whether or not they accept those credits, but we find that, you know, many do, and so our students are walking away with a lot of college credits as well in the AP programming as they do in our dual enrollment programming. So, all in all, I would say at the high school level, before we go down to the middle school, is that, you know, we are not surprised by some of the scores going down a little bit, but we have done a lot already before we even really got all of this data, because we knew with COVID that we would have to do things a little bit differently and provide different supports. So we'll talk a little bit about that at the end, because we do it collectively, grade seven through 12, but we'll let Michael move on to the high school and the middle school.
Good evening, everyone. So why don't we start with the PSATs? You can see that last year, math actually improved slightly while English Language Arts took a small bit. We are tracking it, you'll see we started tracking in 2018, and the significance of that, that's when the administration administrators, we adopted the goal, the long-range goal of trying to improve our cohort at SAT schools overall. The only way to do that to compare apples to apples was to administer the PSAT eight in middle school. Because to be honest, with the SBACK testing, once you get to high school, that's meaningless. They only look at SATs and PSATs. So we made that decision back then, and we've been trying to focus on that. You can tell when COVID hit, as you can see the dip. State is trending down, but as you'll see, if you go to the next slide, there are some comparison there for you between the last three years. Harder to see on the bottom, but you'll notice 864, 871 overall, and 869. So we're close. It's not like a significant dip overall, but when you look at some of the sub-scores, they vary. Can we go to the next one? Then we come to our smarter balance and the Next Generation Science Assessment. I've included from 2015 to present, you'll notice that the trend line is dipping. And it is consistent. It's not a great place to be. I'll be honest with you, we now look at the seventh and eighth grade scores for the last couple of years, but when I look at, if you look down ELA 2022, I have to look at cohorts. So 2021, seventh graders were at 62 in ELA, they are at 56 in 2022, 23. So they went down slightly over the course of the year. Math went up by a point. One of the things we did institute over the last year, year and a half, is we have put a math coach in place, a math literacy coach, and that seems to be helping. It helped some of our teachers coordinate the curriculum between the two, because we did not have a curriculum director or anybody who could was overseeing the whole 7-12 continuum. It was up to department coordinators. And there's a huge picture, and I know Mary Rose is going to talk about the picture in a minute, so I won't steal her thunder, but we put something in place, or say, put something in place using some of our Title I grant funding to help with the math. This past year, we proactively put something in place for English Language Arts, because we noticed even amongst our students, we are seeing, call it the COVID dip, call it what you want, but to be transparent, we see them going down. And we see the scores coming in, is where they're learning to learn again in some ways, but in our structure at the middle school, they're becoming students in a different manner than they were in the elementary schools. And that transition has had an impact on them, obviously impact on the whole state, but as a regional district, we take three towns, we're bringing it together, there's a cohesive thing that we're trying to build and a common understanding. It takes time. So the ELA position, it was put in place this year, and we're starting to see fruits of that labor as well. I know science is undergoing, discussing a revision, I won't steal their thunder, they'll present that at another time, but NGSS has been around for a long time. We've looked at our curriculum, we try to do a lot, and perhaps we'll try to do too much. So, next piece of this, is what do we do with the data? And I'm going to turn it over to Mary Rose.
This is my favorite part, because this is the doing part. And when we look at data, and we have this data that you're seeing, and there's other kinds of data that we engage with, including having faculty members look at the trends in their own classroom spaces, the assessments that they are given. But we try to utilize the data in different ways, from long-term planning to sort of year-long or within a year planning, and sometimes the data forces us into an immediate response. So we use data to help inform our professional development activities. One example was coming out of COVID. We knew that students were, they were challenged in the area of engagement, and a lot of that data came to us from the sending elementary schools, from what we saw in our own classrooms, and so we created a two-year goal around student engagement when we came out of that. So that's the way we would use it, one way we would use it for professional development. Another way is we have an issue right now, where we're trying to meet the needs of some students in the middle school, and we, Michael and I just finished the Title IV grant, and we put in there some grant funding for teachers to learn more about blended learning and ways that they can help support students with different kinds of types of programming. So we use, definitely use data to help us, help our staff, help the students, and not just one way. If you go to the next slide, there's other ways that we use this data as well. We use it to create district goals. And when we think about, for example, in the short term, in the immediate, one, we use lots of different assessments, but we use something called NWEA map testing, which gives us some aligned data across all of our students coming in from three different places that send us different kinds of data. This year, when we gave that, we found that our incoming seventh graders, there were far more of them that needed remedial services for reading, and we didn't have anything in place because we haven't confronted this issue to this degree before. So we used that data, but then we just didn't rely on that. We went back and looked at the SBACK data that Dr. Serusi spoke of, we talked to the teachers, and we created an immediate response. So at the beginning of quarter two, we created some cross-teaming, we created a separate course to help support some students that were struggling and needed more remedial assistance. So that can also happen, where you have an immediate response to try to meet the needs of students. And we'll also use it for curriculum planning. With the PSAT, and right just prior to COVID, which really messed up our whole, our whole response with data, but we had drilled down into the actual questions on one of the PSATs to see what exactly are our students, and it was a PSAT 11. What is it? What kinds of questions are they missing? What are those discrete skills that they aren't getting? And then we identified those and presented out to the entire faculty in order to include those particular skills. And then that would, would then again, when we were writing curriculum, weave into curriculum. So it's really, there's many ways that we use this data to support student learning. But I think the important thing is, is that we sit down quite often and talk about, what do these numbers say? What do these say? Do they agree? And then what are we going to do about it? And that's part of the reason I'm excited about the job that I have now, because I have a feeling what we saw this year was probably also a situation last year, but we just didn't have anybody to look at the data with all the time. And the literacy coach and I spent a great deal of time on that, and then we were actually able to put something into place to meet student needs. So I would say that I'm very proud that we don't just do data dives and really look at things, but that we do something about it, so. Okay, Michael, did you want anything else?
Just a quick add. We've done this presentation for years, and one of the things, first presentation on data like this, a couple of support students were sitting on the floor saying, whatever it says, data does not define. And I just want to make the point, data does not define my personal reason. It is a number. It informs us of areas that we consider areas for growth, but it also, we also have to look at the total picture. There are students, I think here in our adult year, that have different strengths and weaknesses. We need to recognize them. But what we need to be able to do is to figure out how do we work with them to get them to improve? It's that process of continuous improvement. And so, while we're talking about numbers, it's about students. We are not talking about specifically Ava and Oliver. We're talking about their cohort of students who are showing us that perhaps the skills might improve themselves. That's all. Any questions?
I'm glad that you're looking into this data, because I'm seeing some fairly obvious trends, at least in my industry. These would be Blair. So it, you know, I'm not an educator, but I pretend to be one on Monday nights occasionally. It seems to me that the effects of COVID are hanging around, at least that's what I would interpret into this data. So I'm really glad, Mary Rose, that we have you in a role that you're in now, to help us recover from, identify you as well as the rest of the administrators at the school, but you're the tip of the spear. And so, I'm thankful that you're in that role, and we're recognizing the need to react to this. Thank you.
So actually, so one of the things I do know, similar thoughts around what Mike was saying about the data, the numbers stick out to me, because that's what I do. The thing that I recognize, that the colleges also recognize, that there is a falloff, and most, most of the schools that I had the experience of going through with Matthew, they're not even requiring SATs as part of the submission, or it's an option. Can, if you don't, it's not, it doesn't count against you. I guess the only thing, and I appreciate, again, echo Mike's comments, I appreciate Mary Rose and the rest of you, what you're doing to kind of attack the problem, because just looking at the numbers isn't going to do us any good. But I think the thing that I was wondering is, is there any, what is the state saying? I mean, not clearly the state is seeing the same numbers as you mentioned. Is there anything from the state that, you know, particular feedback, support mechanism?
No, I think what the state has is the grants that are available to us based on our numbers, and so taking advantage of all of those options. So I just finished the title program with Michael, and now I keep looking at what's up, what's next, because just places to fulfill needs that we make. Again, and what happened with this year was we didn't know we had it, we just had this panic situation where we realized that there was, there was a greater need than we had ever imagined. I've spent some time in sleepwalking in national trends, which are frightening in terms of this data as well. This is a national issue, and it's very overwhelming when you look at it, I mean, very daunting, but I think one thing that we're fortunate with is that we have this incredibly dedicated faculty who are all hands on deck and are willing to go the extra mile. Again, not just for the student enrollment pieces where they have to spend extra time on syllabi or attending special trainings, but for the students that are struggling, people that are willing to put in some extra time to read. I just handed a teacher of on Friday, said, here, I have this book, it's about this issue that you're dealing with. And she sent me, you know, on Saturday and said, oh, I just read half the book, and I love what it's about this, this is going to help them with their class. So we have great faculty who are really putting in their time.
That was my next question, was the national trend. So if they're echoing kind of what we're seeing, I mean, where do we fall out in that? I mean, I take, I take great pleasure every once a year or so, recounting, well, where does Ram fall out in the kind of the state and national, you know, marker? We are generally very close to the top.
Connecticut is higher than the national trend by plus three, I think, in math and around that same thing in reading. We're in like the top 17 for the country in some places, in most places. And I just, I looked up to the reading in the back, and then I, there's a writing and the science, I didn't get that far into that dive, but, so we're definitely trending better. Some of the things the state has done overall, they've put more attention on parent educators who are support people, and they're, they do incredible work, and we've actually started building a stronger parent educator-specific professional development for them. So just all of that coming in together. But we are, the state of Connecticut is doing better. We're, you know, we're doing better as a district and some other places, but there are other places that are, you know, some of that has to do with, you know, sort of economics and why not. But I never want, I never want to be like, well, this is where we are, so this is where we are, you know? And I also, you know, we were surprised by what we found by doing some standardized testing on our incoming seventh graders, but again, the elementary schools are also dealing with, they didn't do all that, so we're all sort of figuring out, how do we take what we have and how do we help students grow? And again, in all kinds of ways, not one test, but like I said, we were going to make shifts, and we even talked to a teacher and said, this is what we're seeing on the SBACK, this is what we're seeing on this test, what are you seeing? And it seems like the student's on a trajectory of growth, and we said, okay, let's leave the student in this particular class and maybe on the other.
One plug that I would just throw out there, I periodically force the Morris boys to take more advantage of it than they, they should do it more often on their own, but there is the, for anybody that's paying attention to this meeting, there's a math lab opportunity. And I, yeah.
And writing lab, yeah.
And I just know writing is, or math is generally the challenge that goes on at my house, but they, you know, the ability to take your study hall whenever it is, whichever period, and go to a study hall that has a math feature in it, and help you go through your homework or help you catch up on a particular program. And I'm sure the writing lab is very similar. Just making sure that parents know that that's a, that's an option that's available to every student all day, every day, and I don't know if they use, I guess, not for, probably not for this meeting, but I would love to know, what is the, what is the rate that students are taking advantage of that?
They're very busy places. Yeah, if our students, if our seniors who are here, like, they are like, especially first quarter of senior year, it is a very full, the writing lab anyway is very full space. And the students, I find that students become more aware of these resources as they go through, you know, freshman year, maybe not as much, they maybe don't utilize it as much. And with each passing year, maybe because the work gets more challenging, they're writing off to, there are some, there are some days when one of the writing lab teachers has six or seven kids in hand just every day by a certain point in the year, when she's going around supporting, I believe academic labs as well. And, you know, we had talked about, you know, what, how we used data a couple years ago, looking at our math data, the incorporation of some intervention in math was in period eight. I think that's part of why we were able to see, you know, we sort of bucked a trend by having our students increasing up. Now that we've been able to look at the data more carefully in ELA, hopefully being able to impact some of our students who are struggling the most. I mean, reading is, you have to be able to read, and especially for the kids who are coming in and really struggling, you don't want them to be looking down six-year career frustration, and so this is super important. And so this is super important.
I'll just jump in and say, you know, I think that, I appreciate the questions. I appreciate the sentiments and it's concerning to me when you see data trending down. You know, I think you use the term like COVID fog, maybe I might be wrong. I don't know when, like, I don't know when we're going to see the end of the COVID fog. And I don't mean that to, to make excuses, but I think about what our elementary folks are dealing with. Like the students who were in preschool, kindergarten, first grade, where they're learning those foundational reading skills, foundational math skills, foundational. Like they're, they're going to be behind and our elementary colleagues are going to be just doing a lot to get those kids caught up. And that's going to be a trend that we're going to see because what I know is research shows that if students are lacking basic reading skills and are not reading on grade level by the time they leave second grade, they're, they're going to be kids who struggle for much of their academic career. So, so I don't know how long this fog is going to last, but I'm worried it's going to last for a while.
Yes, yeah. Our current seventh graders went home in March of the third grade year. I have a chart on my, on my board in my office. They went home in third grade year and they were in that COVID strange year when they were fourth grade. And I was just talking to a reading specialist about this. He said, he's, that's the year when they discovered their honor and all these great books that they get to sit and learn, that they can read independently. And they lost some of that. And that definitely, and that's our, our strategies to get them reading, you know, in several frustrations, who realize they can.
Yeah. And I, so I think that's going to be something that we are going to continue to contend with for years to come. The other thing that I, that I'll say, because I have to, I feel compelled to say this is, I also think that REM might even be at a greater disadvantage than some other neighboring districts. At least we had been. And the reason I say that is because we didn't have somebody in a position for four or five years in the position that we now have for Mary Rose. And I, I've done the job that Mary Rose is doing in a different district before. And when you don't have somebody who is, who is kind of building that cohesiveness between the different areas and departments to make sure that instructional strategies that are being utilized in one content area can also carry over and be utilized in other content areas. And, you know, having somebody who really is focused on instructional improvement, curricular improvement is crucial for the success of school districts. And, and, and I know that that position existed in this district pre-pandemic and it was eliminated prior to the pandemic, I think shortly before. And I will tell you, so, so, but, but I will tell you, like, if there was a time when that position needed to exist, it would have, it's always, but it was critically important during the pandemic because, and in the years coming out of it, if that makes sense. So, you know, I.
We're picking up the pieces.
Yeah. So, so I appreciate the board's support, you know, for putting Mary Rose's position in place. I, I think it's, it's having somebody who's really just solely focused on that is just, is hugely, hugely vital for, for us to, to move the trend in the other direction.
Yeah. Can't take a foot off the gas.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Well, and, you know, we did have a M E S visit in 2009. It was shortly after we did get the full-time administrative director. And we were cited as, that we were commended for having that in place because historically we hadn't. And, you know, that is something that M E S and that is our accreditation process, that if we don't have that in place, so many other things, you know, get lost in the shuffle. And that, that's, that was considered a strength of our district at the time. So it was, it was not great to see that go, but I'm very appreciative that we're.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
That brings us to 11.2 and the first read of some, quite a few policies. So why don't we just go, go down the list?
Sure. So, so it's the first read, I believe, for three policies. All three of these are actually current existing policies in our, in our policy handbook. And the first one is 4118.2, 4218.2, alcohol, tobacco and drug-free workplace. And really the updates that are being made to this policy are reflective of a couple of different things. Just some added definitions and some added language that is specific to electronic nicotine delivery systems, as well as the fact that cannabis has now been legalized for people 21 and above in the state of Connecticut. And it really, so it adds information and language about the fact that those two fit, those two changes have been made since the policy was last updated. And, and I can certainly entertain any questions that the board might have.
I'll just, I'm trying to, again, with these policies that we're going over. We've discussed these in incredible detail with the cert committee. We're feeling very positive about them. Any questions that the board has, of course, welcome.
Yeah, unless there's any questions specific to this, I don't, I don't remember having, taking anything out that I thought was.
So I'll just speak briefly about the next two. So the next one is employment, employment and student teacher checks. Again, you're going to hear this over and over from me, is, is it's critically important that our policies are reflective of the most recent legislation. And this is a policy that was recommended to be updated because it is currently not aligned with current legislation. What I could say to the board is even though our policy does not reflect what current legislation is, the good news is, is that our practices do. That's one of the things that happens a lot is we find out that these changes need to be made. We implement the changes, but the, the language in the policy does not get updated. So, so that's, that's why we're doing this heavy lifting with our policies this year. So what I could say again is, is we're, we're in alignment with our, with our practices. We're just not in alignment with the language of our policies.
A great example of that, right, was the heat policy for the students. When they were exercising outside for the sports, we were doing the right thing, but it wasn't written in the policy.
Correct, correct. The, the next one is policy 1435 possession and use of deadly weapons or firearms on school grounds. Again, this is a situation where it's an existing policy. Changes have been made in the legislation around it primarily around not just possession of a deadly weapon or firearm on school grounds, but it also could be on school transportation or around, or any type of school-sponsored activities as well. And, and again, we're just making sure that we're getting things that's been updated since April of 2016. And this last, and this last one. So those are the three policies that we are looking at for a second read for next time. And I can certainly entertain questions now or if there's anything, questions that are, come to mind after this meeting, is whether we can communicate directly.
I don't have questions, anybody? Nope.
I can go on to the repeal. So there's, there's, I believe, four policies that we are recommending repeal or deletion of. Again, this is a first read, so that will not be done this month. That will be done next month. The first one is 5214 student use of motor vehicles. Again, this is a policy that is not mandatory and not required and our attorneys are recommending repeal. I will say, I did check with the high school administration and this is something that is already covered and highlighted in the student handbook. And that's one of the things that our attorney said was if there are things that are covered in policy currently, but can just be in, in handbooks, student handbooks instead. And then they think they're more easily changed and kept current. Similarly, leaving school grounds, it's not mandatory and I'm recommending repeal, as is our attorney. Again, this is also something that is highlighted and talked about in student handbooks. And finally, 5211 dismissal of students, very similarly, not mandatory, recommended repeal. And it is information that is covered in student handbooks. The, the last one, 5210 student interviews, again, not mandatory, recommended repeal from our, our legal team. I will say that this is something that is not covered in student handbooks, but I will tell you that principals wouldn't give access to students, to a reporter coming onto school grounds saying, I want to interview this particular student. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't give access to that anyways, just because it's, I don't know if it would technically fall under FERPA, but we just wouldn't give access to reporters. So just from a practical place, that's not a practice that we would, that we would engage in. So again, happy to answer any questions before members have them now or in between now and our next meeting.
Questions, anybody? Okay. All right. Which brings us to the financials.
All right. So 11.3A, you'll have your enclosures in the packet. So the net favorable, the projection for the net favorable position as of October 31st, 2023 is $166,074. That's approximately $26,180 more than I reported in the month of October. You will see that we're still gathering invoices for our agri-science and our magnet schools. Those are places that we have to pay to send our students, or parents choose to send their students to those facilities and we have to pay for that. The capital improvement fund, the cracked ceiling and line painting was completed, as well as the middle school bleacher replacement of seats. The middle school wood shop filtration has been ordered and has been delivered. The installation will be in December during the winter break. H, high school 325 HVAC reconfiguration is scheduled for winter break also. The system-wide exit signs are backordered with no anticipated delivery. So we are researching other sources so that we can find something that's quality so that we can use. Central office replacement AC unit, it has been bid. We have somebody that we will award the bid to, but that will be done in the December timeframe. It was too late for this meeting. The system-wide facility assessment, the reference checks for the company that Mr. Schleihhopper suggested is, are being conducted and are almost completed. We are waiting for one more responding. The capital non-recurring fund, the, we are awaiting planning and zoning approval. However, we have to provide the information and unfortunately, Mr. Schleihhopper's been a little bit behind. So he has to provide 14 items to planning and zoning for their consideration of the material containment. And the people services department is closely monitoring their students and making sure that purchase orders are encumbered with, in alignment with the IEP meetings that they hold. Are there any questions that the board might have? So hearing none. Next item is 11.3B in your packet. So I'm requesting a transfer be made from the unallocated project lying in capital non-recurring to the irrigation well replacement. Last month, we requested that $27,063.39 of available funds was moved to the unallocated project after doing a triple check. Unfortunately, we were a little hasty in moving $13,953. So I just need to move that back to make sure that the project itself is not overexpendable. The fund was in no, we're near, the fund itself is, is fine. The director of facilities tracked projects, the cost of the project. I tracked the fund directly. So there was just a misalignment of where we put.
We're still $13,000 on the plus side. Okay. So why don't we do that? Why don't we manage that now? Put a motion out there and then we can have a discussion about it as necessary. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve the reallocation of $13,953 from the capital non-referring unallocated to the irrigation well replacement project. All right, Mike, is there a second? Thank you, Eric. Any discussion? Just to be clear, just to reiterate, we moved $26,000 last month because we thought we were finished with that project, but there's still $13,000 as a balance that still needs to be paid out. So we're still, when I said we're $13,000 on the plus sides, we're still, we're still not moving everything that we have set aside for that. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously.
Thank you very much for that. Okay. So 11.3C is the food service monthly sales and expenditures for the month of October. So we are currently running at a loss of $54,886.63. We're still awaiting receipt of the third allotment for the supply chain grant, which was approximately $36,000, $37,000. So once that money comes in, that'll help offset the loss that we're currently experiencing. And just for everybody's edification, the food costs have increased as of October 26th. It's about, they were increased as of eight percent. So we're seeing eight percent higher costs of food and supplies for the cafeteria. So are there any questions that the board may have on that? Right, thank you. So 11.3D is the middle school, high school student activity report as of October 31st. The balances that are recorded in this report match the bank. Are there any questions that the board may have on that? So the final object for me is 11.3E. So as of October 31st, 2023, we reinvested dividends of $1,666.62. And I've also included the historical rates for the month. And again, it seems like the rates, the annualized rates seem to be trending upwards. So it was a good idea to invest the funds as we have. Does the board have any questions?
Anyone?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Eva. All right. That brings us to committee reports. Facilities, safety, transportation.
Facilities doesn't have anything new to report. We didn't cover it on our last board meeting. And as a matter of fact, we canceled the November facilities meeting. Our next one is in January.
Finance, audit, compliance and insurance?
Yes. Before I start, I would just like to thank Mike for being our chairman. I think we have a pretty smooth running machine here and I think that goes directly to your leadership. And I'd just like to remind the other board members that there are additional responsibilities that end up going to your chair. Some unpleasant and they have come up over the past couple of years. And Mike just has absorbed those things and, and taken care of them without passing on that stress to the board. I very much appreciate that and I'm thankful that we've had you for this.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Also my last, my last meeting and it's been a pleasure to be on the board. I've met a lot of great people. Now, as far as reporting out the finance, I plan to bring in some numbers regarding the possibility of bringing some students in from the Columbia School System. Those were not fully baked and I'm not going to present any of that tonight. I think I can kind of describe what we're thinking about in, in a nutshell. Well, attempt to put it in pretty much so. And, and that is that as we discussed at the last meeting, there is the possibility of some students coming over from the Columbia School System. We received a presentation a month or so ago on that topic. And the part of it is that there's a certain tuition number that we would have to meet in order for, for Columbia to consider sending the kids over. And there are opposing ways of looking at this, at this decision. One way to look at it is to say that it's, they're offering less than what our taxpayers pay from our three tenants. And so we could say no. And there is a data from sort of supporting that in that there was a proposal from Tom Franklin a year or so ago, very similar, and we said no to that. However, there is another completely different way of looking at it, which is that, that it represents revenue for the budget. And if the amount of revenue coming in is more than the amount that the budget would grow up by absorbing these kids, that there would be, it could turn out net favorable. And that is something for the board to consider. So I don't have numbers. So I don't have numbers, I've only said what I've said so that the board can generally think about this moving forward, and, and, you know, I think there'll be more study to come, and I have confidence that the finance subcommittee will be able to handle that, and that the board will make the right decision. Whatever that means, thank you.
I just had a question.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, I couldn't attend the meeting, I had a conflict, definitely, but there's a mention of an occupational therapist position with another district. Is that, is that something we contract?
Yeah, so, so I'll, I'll speak to that, that was another agenda item.
And thank you for that.
Yeah, so, so the board may recall that we had a, in last year's budget, we had a 1.0 FTE full-time occupation. The decision was made that we didn't need to fully staff that position of a 1.0, that it could reduce to a 1. Ultimately, that decision was made, and it was a good decision to make. Unfortunately, the person who was working for us wanted to maintain a 1.0 FTE, and just made the decision to, to leave employment with the district. What we had to do, because that was on fairly short notice, was we had to contract out for occupational therapy services, and that's what we're currently doing right now. And Christine Hartwig, our People's Services Director, you know, had a really creative idea, which was, there's a neighboring school district that has indicated a need for a 0.4 FTE for an occupational therapist. Christine has looked at the numbers and feels that we would be well-equipped with a 0.6 FTE, and so we're looking at the idea of creating an opportunity for shared services. How we would want to see it, and this is what we discussed at the finance subcommittee, was that we would be the employer, and we would essentially contract out with this other district. And it would be a shared responsibility of both salary and benefits at the 60-40 split. The benefit to us being the employer is should our needs change, and we need to go from a 0.6 to a 0.8, we could say, we're going to a 0.8. And we couldn't do that if the other person was the employer. So this is a model that has been set up by other school districts, and we feel it would be advantageous for us to do the same thing. So we brought this just concept to the finance subcommittee to say, is this something that the group would be supportive of? The overwhelming feedback was absolutely, it definitely would be something that, and so we're going to move forward with, with that plan. And I can certainly try to answer any questions if you need.
I guess the only question I would have is, from, from what we budgeted to what it will end up costing us, is there any material difference?
No, it wouldn't, I mean, well, we haven't done the budget for next year, because it would be.
Oh, it wouldn't take exactly.
It would, yes, correct, I apologize, I should, I should have been more clear. We, we would maintain the remainder of this year with our contracted services, and then we would build the cost in for the 4 to 6 to 10 for this year.
Any other question? Okay. Negotiations, nothing, right?
We don't, we're going to have a couple coming up, starting the next.
Okay. Did Carrie join us, Mike? Nope. So policy, either Eric or Gabe, did you guys have anything you want to update us on?
No. Yeah, nothing really, other than what we've already talked about during this meeting.
Okay. Program communications?
I had a conference, I had a parent-teacher conference.
How dare you be a good parent?
No, I had to be a teacher.
Right, good teacher for our, I don't know.
So if it's okay, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, we talked to Mary Rose Mead and the heads of, of the math department, I think, and the ECE department.
It was, it was math and.
Ah, that's right, special ed, thank you. So there were, there were a couple of new classes that are being introduced. One of them is a computer language for engineers, that it sounds like it's exciting. And the other one was a, an alternative class for.
Adapted health.
Adapted health, yes, so for special education. So both of them were met with positive feedback from, from the committee, and so the folks will move forward with those programs, it sounds like, in corporate dynamics next year's program.
Okay, I'll just add, because it's a subject for the evening, we're super excited about, we're, we're excited about both classes, because they're going to be really good for the kids, but just in the, you know, the conversation with dual enrollment, the computer science class that's going to get put into place is actually another, is adding to our ECE program. So it's going to be another dual enrollment outlet for students.
It's really exciting, being on the program committee, I've been able to hear about all the new courses that are coming up. I mean, it's really exciting. I mean, I think these are really great opportunities for kids.
Yeah, I didn't bring it up when we were talking about it earlier, but hearing about these programs really does, it encourages me and reassures me that we are making changes and adding curriculum that is specifically targeting some of the trends that are in the wrong direction relative to performance.
I think the thing that's most encouraging to me is the, how we're, you know, there's a, I think, certainly in past, all school systems or a lot of school systems, it was just try to get as many kids as we could to college. And what college and what to go just college for wasn't really necessarily the focus, and I think we've definitely learned that, you know, there's a percentage of kids that are definitely going to go into that kind of traditional pipeline, and then there's a percentage of kids that we owe just as much of an, you know, an obligation to set them up education-wise to succeed in that, those other pipelines, whether it's the workforce or, you know, some sort of trade school or, or the military or whatever. So every time I see all of those kind of non-traditional sort of, maybe, non-traditional from maybe old high school standards to, you know, current high school standards, where we have all these programs related to the, to the different colleges, is really encouraging. Like, I think we're, we're catching a lot, a lot of kids that maybe wouldn't have been caught in the past, so. Okay. Facilitators, I can tell you that from EastCon, there's nothing material that EastCon is doing that's indifferent, other than the great stuff that they normally do, and they continue to get healthier in some of the financial aspects that have been challenging for them in the last couple of years. But other than that, they're continuing to move forward with the same programs, and they continue to support us. I found one more EastCon person running around that I didn't notice here at Hebron, and it's so, every, it always surprises me when I meet one of them that's working in yet another capacity that I didn't realize they support us in. Carrie, I don't think joined us, right? Anybody join that, did anybody go to the table? How was that?
I thought it was really pretty good, I was, this sounds really awful to say, but I was really surprised. God, I should have thought that through a little bit.
Yeah.
No, that, you know, I almost, in the very beginning, I was like, oh, this is just really going to be kind of teacher educator focused, and it really was not. Colin and I talked about a lot of different things that we could come back here, you know, getting board member, like an orientation type thing, when you, you know, you start your term, what does it look like, what are the roles and responsibilities? I mean, there was just a lot of different things. And the thing that I really liked was before every, every morning session and at lunch, and even at dinner, they had student performers from different school districts, and they were phenomenal, they were really great. So it was, it was worth it, I was really glad that I went.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. So I would just say to our new board members that are participating, getting ready to jump in, in every aspect of anything that has been challenging here at the board, especially in, in the role as an officer on the board, I have been, I've contacted Mr. Crusoe at Cave, who's the, I don't know, he's the president?
No, he's Senior Associate.
Senior Associate. To be able to just get a really good feel for how do other boards manage this, what's the best practices. So Cave, especially from a new board member perspective, I went to that my first year that, that weekend, and you'll have an opportunity to do that as well. I strongly suggest you do that just to make those connections and be able to feel comfortable about reaching out to them if you have questions, whether it's in your capacity on certain committees, or whether you're serving as one of the officers, or just being on the board. There, the Cape was extremely helpful in a lot of challenging circumstances, and so I think pretty highly of them, and as a new board member, I'd certainly try to take advantage of that. Okay. So that brings us to public comments, which, again, bear with me for one moment, Hebron and Dover and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of comments presented. So at this point, is there anyone physically present that would like to comment? Please, sir. Join us from the 70's couch.
Thanks for saving my seat, but I appreciate that. You can smell it, thanks to Robert Del Malro, our new president. On behalf of the teachers, I'd just like to thank the board members that are going to be leaving us, we appreciate your time and your energy and your efforts and all that you've done to make Ram a continued success here, I think this one, appreciate you well, and your next endeavor, thank you very much. I thank you as well personally, I appreciate the fact that some of you have stuck around, while half of your own children have flown the Ram nest, and it really says a lot about our community, and I appreciate the work. Likewise, I'd like to thank the new members, welcome. We have a great team, and we look forward to working with you, and happy to teach you, welcome. Thank you for the work we're about to do, appreciate it. Thank you, have a nice.
Thanks, Eva. Is there anyone online that would like to give a public comment? Go ahead and make yourself known, or raise your digital hand. Oh, sorry, Mike, please. Well, you go first, and then we'll, we'll come up on that.
Mike, the streetsy little school principal, and also the head of the Ram Administrator Association. I think on behalf of all of us, we want to thank the board, those members that are leaving the board, and are coming along, for their volunteer work and the work that they've done over the past few years. It's always, it's, how would you speech, I say, it's really tiring, it's a lot of work, very hard, having sat on that side of the room, and having to sit on this side of the room, I can tell you that the rewards are the growth. And your dedication is appreciated by all of us, your dedication to us, to the staff, to the custodians, to everybody here, has been very valuable and been a fishing service for all of us. We love to be here, on board, and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thanks. Eric, was anybody online that indicated? Nope, all right. Which brings us to item 14, which is informational items. Anything on that on the calendar?
So I think Ava mentioned it earlier, we do have a blood drive tomorrow, and I will tell you, if you have an opportunity to sign up, I don't know if it's too late officially through the blood drive website, but if you email Kathy Green tonight, please do, and then tell her I sent you, because she's mad at me because I didn't sign up, because I'm on a schedule to do donations every 59 days, and it would throw my schedule off. She didn't care about that. She's very, very competitive, but I said to Kathy, I'm, I'm doing it more frequently. So anyways, so, but if you're able to do that, I, I've, I've been donating blood since I've been legally allowed to do it, as literally as often as I possibly can, it's just a huge thing, so be able to do it tomorrow here at the high school, email Kathy. I'm excited about the Drama Club production of Puffs that is coming up, December 1st and 2nd. If I'm, if I understand it correctly, I did a little research, it's a parody of sorts of, of the Harry Potter series by J.K. Rowling's, so, which, I love those books, so I'm excited to see it, it's a, a different perspective of the Harry Potter kind of action, so I'm excited to see that, that's, again, they're doing a Friday night show on December 1st, and then they're doing a matinee show on the 2nd, and an evening show on, on Saturday and 2nd as well, so please come and, and see us, see our kids do great stuff. So high school winter concert is going to be the 14th, December 14th, in the high school auditorium, and, you know, we've talked about the success of our fall sports, there is no rest for the wicked, a lot of those student athletes are going to be segueing immediately after Thanksgiving into our winter sports, which officially begin on Monday, when we come back from Thanksgiving, so I'm excited about the winter sports season and some of the other sports activities, so, and that concludes my informational items.
Okay. Any questions on either calendar or any of the discipline reports? I didn't notice any dark trends or changes on the calendar. Okay, which brings us to adjournment, and at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Mike, anybody second? Thank you, Gabe. Any discussion? Hearing none? Voice vote, all in favor? Any opposed? We stand adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.
It's a wrap.
It's a wrap. Could I, if I could, just ask the board members?